You all can hear me, right? Okay.
I'm Dr. Breisha Gordon and my pronouns are she, her, and hers. I service the Alabama Ambassador to Project Share. Project Share is designed to address the stigma associated with HIV disclosure in Southern Black communities, as well as support organizations and coalitions fighting to end HIV criminalization. Alabama does not have HIV-specific criminalization laws, but a person with HIV can be prosecuted for not disclosing their status under the state communicable disease laws and could face up to 10 years in prison. Adults who have made decisions to engage in sexual activity, share in love, share in pleasure, and share in the responsibility of sexual health. HIV is not a crime. For more information, visit the C-Ro Project at www.ceroproject.com.
So, good evening, everyone. I am Leisha McKinley Beach, founder and CEO of the Black Public Health Academy dot com. And welcome to our Alabama Town Hall meeting. It gives me great pleasure to introduce our facilitator and special guest on this evening. Our facilitator is Dr. Breisha Gordon. She is a health literacy specialist. She works on the Central Alabama Neighborhood Health Initiative Grant through the City of Montgomery and is responsible for spearheading health literacy, professional development activities, and community health initiatives. Breisha has worked in public health, human services, and adult education in different capacities for the past 18 years. She has worked in nonprofit leadership and management, project management, adult education, clinical research, healthcare management, case management, and community education and engagement. So she has covered the whole gamut around nonprofit work. Dr. Gordon holds degrees from the Tuskegee University, Troy University, Nova Southern, East, South, Nova Southeastern University. I'm sorry, I got all excited about Tuskegee. And the University of Alabama in Birmingham. She is married with four children. So we're extremely honored to welcome Dr. Gordon on this evening. We are also very fortunate to have with us from the C-Ro Project and many other hats that she wears. Ms. Deirdre Johnson, known to many of us around the globe as Deirdre Speaks. Deirdre has worked in the HIV field for over 20 years, but is most passionate about her activism on eradicating stigma and ending criminalization of people living with HIV. Deirdre Johnson is the co-founder of End Criminalization HIV and Overincarceration in Virginia. It's a coalition that is a vast network of multiracial and gender-inclusive Virginians led by people living with HIV and their allies fighting for freedom from stigma and injustice for all. Currently, Deirdre serves as the National Program and Strategic Planning Manager at C-Ro Project, overseeing amp micro grants and consulting, state coalitions, and community organizing. She has served as the State Lead for the Positive Women's Network USA and is a graduate of their 2019 Policy Fellowship, 2022 C-Ro Project Justice Institute Fellow and alum of the Sister Love 2020 Leading Women's Society, a former U equals U plus ambassador, and has been featured as the top 125 and 10 amazing people living with HIV by Plus Magazine. She also hosts a show that she is missing to be with Alabama tonight called Pillow Talk with Deirdre Speaks. And it is a weekly virtual support group for people living with HIV. And this group averages about 300-plus years of experience. Wow. So it gives me great, great pleasure to introduce Deirdre and Dr. Breisha Gordon. So, Dr.
Thank you.
Yes.
Gordon.
I am, I am going to turn it over to you and get your slides up here. All right.
So again, good evening, everyone. I am Breisha Gordon. I will be facilitating our session this evening about Project Share and bringing awareness to HIV criminalization laws in the state of Alabama. So just some guiding principles for this training. First and foremost, all, all questions are welcome. This isn't a conversation, this isn't a presentation, but instead it's a conversation for us to just speak freely since this is a small group. We also don't have to agree, but we must respect each other's comments and experiences. And lastly, what other guiding principles would you like to add? Would anyone like to add in? Okay. So let's go ahead and just get started in discussing what HIV criminalization is. How would, how is it defined? So when we talk about HIV criminalization, we're referring to laws that criminalize otherwise legal conduct or that increase punishments based solely on a person's HIV diagnosis. Many laws do not require transmission and may even criminalize conduct that could never lead to transmission. After more than 40 years of HIV research and significant biomedical advancements to treat and prevent HIV transmission, many state laws are now outdated and do not reflect our current understanding of HIV. So let's just look at some categories of the HIV criminalization laws. HIV-specific laws that criminalize or control actions that could potentially expose another to HIV. Then sexually transmitted disease or STD, communicable contagious infectious disease, also known as STDs, communicable or infectious disease laws that criminalize or control actions that could potentially expose another person to STDs and communicable infectious diseases. This might also include HIV. Might would be the key word here, might. Sentence enhancement laws specific to HIV or STDs, which do not criminalize a behavior but increase the sentence length when a person with HIV commits certain crimes. And then lastly, there are no specific criminalization laws. So this map is just kind of giving us a visual of, of course, the United States and looking at each state to see exactly what category they fit in when it comes to HIV criminalization or just criminalization laws in general. And so when we look at the state of Alabama, that light blue state, then we're looking at the category of criminalized or controlled actions through STD, communicable infectious diseases, specific statutes. So there are 14 of those. So if we can just look at it in more detail. People living with a communicable disease face a Class C felony. And I'll talk more about what Class C or Class A misdemeanors, what they represent in terms of sentencing. So again, they face a Class C felony punishable up to 10 years of imprisonment and/or a $15,000 fine for knowingly causing or attempting to cause another person to come into contact with a bodily fluid, unless such contact is consented to or is necessary for medical care. So what that's basically stating is that an individual will come in contact with bodily fluid. That is basically non-consensual. The statute defines bodily fluid to include blood, saliva, mucus, seminal fluid, urine, or feces. Assault with bodily fluid is usually a Class A misdemeanor, but becomes a Class C felony if the person commits the crime of assault with bodily liquids, excuse me, bodily fluids, knowing that he or she has a communicable disease. So some other important information. The Alabama State Board of Health may quarantine, isolate, or civilly commit people living with a STD to include HIV. It doesn't appear that Alabama has ever implemented this practice. Also, the Alabama State Board of Health, also known as the Alabama Department of Public Health, may be required to testify against people living with HIV or an STD in a grand jury proceeding or criminal trial. So just kind of looking into sentencing when we're talking about Alabama felonies and misdemeanors. So a Class A felony comes with 10 years to a maximum of 90 years or life in prison. Then you have a Class B felony, which is a sentence of a minimum of two years in prison and a maximum sentence of 20. Then we have Class C, which is sentenced to a minimum of one year and a day in prison to a maximum sentence of 10. So in this particular category, the Class A felony is the most extreme. Then we move down into our misdemeanors. So with Class A, a misdemeanor can be punished by up to one year in jail and a $6,000 fine. Then we have a Class B misdemeanor, which is six months of jail time and a $3,000 fine. And then the Class C misdemeanor faces up to three months of jail time and a $500 fine. So this particular graphic also just kind of goes into more detail regarding the information that I shared. So as it pertains to HIV, Alabama has prosecuted for HIV exposure under general criminal laws. So again, Alabama has prosecuted for HIV exposure under general criminal laws. But when we talk about exposure to HIV, there's so much that goes into that. When you look at the definition that they go by regarding communicable diseases, it does not make it very clear and it leaves into question in terms of the disease. The disease, I guess you could say prevalence, or is a person really truly at risk? Let's say if they were to be spat on or something of that nature. It, it leaves a lot to kind of try to figure out. There's a lot of gray areas with the way that Alabama defines their communicable disease law. And so that's why it's so important for us to have this conversation. Because again, there's so much that goes into HIV. There's so much misinformation out there about how it's transmitted. And so this conversation will hopefully bring a lot of things into light and even kind of highlight areas on which Alabama needs to improve upon when it comes to defining their law as it pertains to HIV.
So Dr. Gordon, I do want to point out that, you know, even as we look at the law that is currently on the books for the state of Alabama, when you look at these body fluids, what we know based on science is that saliva, urine, and feces, these are body fluids that transmit HIV, but we still see it in the state statute that a person could be prosecuted for any of those body fluids by association of being somebody living with HIV, which is truly unfortunate.
Yes, it's very, very unfortunate. And those of us who have, you know, who are educated in HIV in terms of transmission and the statistics and things of that nature. Just for example, if a person were to spit on someone else, okay? And let's say this person was HIV positive. There's so much more that goes into that for, for it to even be highly probable that this person would even give a person HIV by spitting on them. But also, let's go a step further to say the probability of that happening in terms of a person becoming HIV positive because someone spit on them is highly unlikely. So there's just a lot of scientific knowledge that's lacking when it comes to this law, which is very similar to the IVF law, but that's completely a different conversation. But I think it's very important that we bring this to light and this conversation is important because again, there's a lot of ignorance centered around HIV in general, right? And then when we talk about the transmission of HIV, that's a completely different conversation. And so it's clear that the state that I love, the state that I was born and raised in, the state of Alabama, we're definitely behind the eight ball on this.
And so thank you for sharing that content. And I just want to kind of capture something that you said before we move on. You know, again, as we look at these, these body fluids like saliva, urine, and feces that we know transmission cannot occur, but it's still a part of a law, a criminal law that impacts individuals based on a health diagnosis should be unacceptable in every state in the country. And so it gives me great pleasure to, again, introduce somebody who is doing that work to make it unacceptable in every state in the country. Ms. Deirdre Johnson, also known as Deirdre Speaks from the C-Ro Project. And she's going to be sharing with us about today being HIV is Not a Crime Awareness Day and other projects of C-Ro as well as her own advocacy work to end HIV criminalization in the United States and beyond. So Ms. Deirdre?
There we go, mute button. I was hoping that I would make it through one presentation without not being able to find the mute button. First and foremost, thank you both for that, that level setting as to, you know, what brings us here. Alabama, of course, is a state in the South, part of the Bible Belt. Stigma is real, discrimination is real, which leads, you know, me to a way to why I'm at C-Ro Project and why C-Ro Project does the work that we do. We definitely do not want to see anyone that is living with HIV or reasons for prevention of HIV to be feeling like they are a problem, especially because of a health disease or a health condition that they have. What we do know outside of sexually transmitted infections, HIV is the only other disease that is managed in this way where you could be criminalized for that. So it is unfortunate in how things are tacked on, if you will, to other charges. Like we, you know, if you're in prostitution, for example, if you're working with sex work. And we have Tennessee who's actually going through this, which is a state, right? Not too far from you all, who's going through this now that if you are arrested for prostitution and they find out that you're HIV positive, that's additional enhancements that come on, onto your sentence. And up until, that's, they're working on this right now to where if you are charged, and again, this isn't in Alabama, this is in Tennessee, that if you are charged with aggravated prostitution, you are automatically put on the sex offender registry for the rest of your life. And so they are working on that right now in the General Assembly to try to get that out. And we can go ahead and go into 50 different conversations about how the sex offender registry does not support and/or help with this public health issue. And especially if you are incarcerated, you're a person living with HIV. The other piece that we also recognize is that the treatment and care that you're going to get is not going to be top-notch in some ways. It may create even bigger barriers for you to receive treatment and care was on a webinar earlier with Carrie Thomas, who was incarcerated in Idaho. And he was sharing that even when he was coming in for his first time, someone who was in the hole is screaming out the window and say, hey, that's that person with HIV and AIDS. It wasn't quite as nice as I put it. But even in those spaces, then you could be treated as such. And so at C-Ro Project, we really try to organize communities. We tried to organize organizations as well as coalitions that are working to change, create change, modernize, and/or repeal their efforts in their state. Alabama, it is a great thing, I mean, as small as it might seem, where it does say that it has not appeared to where folks have been criminalized for this. But when you have in a state document that is what everyone is guided by for the whole entire state, then it says that if you are a person living with HIV and/or sexually transmitted disease or infection, then you can be criminalized. And that perpetuates stigma to the next level because the state says that. And then of course, with this, the rest of the folks in the state, they want to follow that to a letter. We talked earlier as before we came on to record about rural. And no, I did not say rural, rural areas. I'm from a rural area in Virginia myself, which, what is that? And folks, what is a area? A rural area is that you have, we now have two and a half stoplights going through the town. And everybody knows everybody, even in my case, my, both of my grandmothers and even a lot of my family now work in the education system, which we know that there's one elementary school, one middle school, one high school, one grocery store, one probably gas station that you can get your chicken in, your lottery tickets and everything else at. And where does everybody come? They, they watch and hey, well, such and such went in here. And then if you have public health in your area as well, there's one public health space that you go to. And probably nine times out of 10, once a week, there is a place where it is just for those people that are living with either HIV or STDs and somebody's auntie, cousin, nephew, uncle, and everybody sitting outside that little spot. Girl, let me tell you who I didn't see walking in and out of there today. And now it's getting back to everyone. So we know that stigma is real. We know that in rural areas, stigma is even more real because everybody knows everyone. And then let's put into, because there's so many intersections for HIV criminalization. If you don't have transportation to go to your nearest city, that might be anywhere from 30 minutes to two hours away to get care so that, you know, somebody's uncle is sitting on the porch watching you go into this clinic. Then, you know, you don't have those kinds of things. And then let's not even talk about Ubers in rural areas. There are not Ubers and lifts that are going to get you or even a taxi at times to get you from point A to point B. So as we are doing what do people do, life is life and we're enjoying each other's company. However, that company shows up. And of course, you know, hey, you know, such and such got HIV, that thing. Or, you know, it's several different things. It ain't specifically HIV that they're going to say, like it's diabetes, ain't diabetes, it's sugar. You know, so you know, they got that, that thing going on over there. And then, you know, and it's what they're going to say. And so then the community now is against someone like me, who was a woman living with HIV for 23 years. Like, girl, don't you mess with her. I know she fine, she look good, she looking good. But I just want to know she got that thing. So then it continues on the perpetuation of stigma and discrimination. So then why would I want to share my HIV status if I've already seen what other people have gone through and then let alone get tested? And then if it is by chance that I may have intentionally, which I love, how Alabama puts their laws and how that, I mean, I will say on that part that I like how they have said it has to be some intention that is there. And that's the part that is hardest is that he said, she said, and without fact, and it needs to be said transmission. So C-Ro Project is working very diligently to make sure that any state that has a thought, an inkling, is working on anything towards modernization, repeal, change, awareness, prevention of HIV criminal laws that we are here to support. And I can honestly say, as a woman living with HIV in Virginia and one of the co-founders of Echo VA, it has been instrumental to have not only just national partners, but your local partners as well, community members, those that are part of aid service organizations, community-based organizations, and even your churches, your, even the, the grocery store that's there, that one little BP that's on the corner that you can go to to get your gas, and even some, some community members that feel brave enough to stand up and stand with us in this movement. So we have seen it happen in Virginia. As a coalition in 2018, we created, we started. And in 2021, we were able to have our laws modernized. We too are in the similar category with the Class C with the felony. And we're working at this point in Virginia to make sure that that felony either A goes away completely or that it is changed into a misdemeanor that would be most less burdensome on the cost of the state. And I'll stop there because I could talk forever as I do get excited about this work. But more importantly, Alabama, if you are listening, if you're watching, you have resources, please check those out, look and find out how you can get involved. There are two beautiful queens that are sitting here right now that are pushing this effort to say, hey, let's get organized. How can we do it and what's the next step? And I'm definitely here for the ride to assist you all in that process.
Thank you so much, Deirdre, and thank you for sharing, you know, so much content. I do want to ask a question of you and then I'll open it up to, to the group as well. You know, we talk about Alabama not having HIV-specific criminalization laws and punishment coming under the communicable disease law. And this question is associated with stigma that I saw. You know, it's funny, the things that people will send you because of the work that, that, you know, you do. And so someone forwarded me a news article about a young man who plays for the University of Alabama. No, you ain't going to get me to say Roll Tide, I'm a gator. But this young man was arrested for knowing he had an STD and not disclosing it to a sexual partner. And it was really interesting to me about the timing. This is right before the national championship game. And so when my husband and I were looking at it, we done, we done created a whole narrative around what happened. You know, he dumped old girl, you know, old girl is angry. It's going to be more than him being the VP of the, of the national championship game. Now people going to be talking about, he got something, you know? And even though it doesn't say HIV, that would be the narrative. And then that could be a, you know, that's my way of getting back at him for how this relationship ended. That may not be for, for Alabamians that are watching. That may not be the narrative at all. But, you know, when you do this for so long, you start looking at, hmm, you know, what's the motive behind right now, the week of the national championship game that this comes out? But I mentioned that because we're talking about stigma as well. And so can you just shed light and, you know, I ask all of our panelists here, just shed light on how stigma impacts us in a very different way? Like how that may impact this young man's future? Like, how that may impact this young man's future and career? Even if no transmission occurred, the fact that people can still now Google his name and look up and see his arrest um because someone said that, you know, he didn't disclose his status to them.
This um, I'm, thank you. This is a a so relevant of a conversation because this happens in daily life. Um, and you're a thousand percent right. Google it. Israel. Google it. Don't have, it is not good with a, it ain't got no bad memory. It record air everything. And so with that, you're a hundred percent right. This person, this young man, for the rest of his life, if any, he goes for a job interview um to to get a financing probably on the cars. Somebody else is interested. Let me Google you. Um, this is gonna follow you. And I know one thing that this has happened for us in Virginia. We've actually had folks that have had HIV and their name associated in press um and in different ways. And it has caused a spiral of of events for them um where life was lifing and other things to where even as far as they even committed suicide on some of the things where it, you know, created so much disaster, if you will, in their life. Um, I know people that have lost their jobs um working in the, again, transmission didn't happen. And it was because the partner got upset over something, whatever it was, something that is this big, that could have been worked worked out and talked out. And now this person has to have a a life of interest life, um if you will, where losing jobs, not able to obtain um jobs. Um, one particular person in Virginia lost their license as um a licensed clinical social worker. So trying to find, you know, he did all of that work at school. And again, transmission didn't happen in all of this, and now it's impacted the rest of their life and how they move. When we talk about individuals that have gone on sex offender registries, again, this is not in Alabama. Alabama does not have a sex offender registry. But when we talk about, say, a Robert Suttle um from Louisiana, who's been on the sex offender registry, and that has to follow him all the days of his life until we get that repealed because Louisiana, we coming for you. Uh, we working on trying to change that. That means that Robert cannot go to any of his cousins or um nephews or nieces or anyone under the age of eighteen to their special events until they become of age um over eighteen. So he's missing out on a whole life. We have LaShonda, who's in Tennessee, who just was the first black woman who was able to come off of the sex offender registry for criminal exposure. Um, and she is now able after fifteen years to go and see her family. Um, she didn't have children that were of small age, but as a parent, not being able to go to your PTA lessons, um sessions and um, you know, the chorus and all the fun stuff and not being able to be present. So the impact goes beyond just that piece of paper that says, I'm a person living with HIV and they put me in this criminalized state. It also goes beyond into our psychosocial um everyday living as well. Oh, thank you. So they do have a sex offender registry. If you could talk a little bit more.
Say Marco or uh Dr. Gordon?
It's like it was Dr. Gordon, um but I can talk a little bit about it. I'm Marco. Hey, everybody. Yeah, we have about sixteen thousand individuals on the um sex offender registry. Um, which you, Deidra, you really, really, you know, in my head and mind, I never really thought about how many on that list fit in the category that we're talking about tonight. Um, which is interesting because um it it really is sad because um I do grassroots work. So, you know, it's like somebody may knock on that door right there, he in a minute telling me they have gone through something. That's that's how I'm connected to the community. Or they could call me anytime of the night and tell me something is going on. That's how I'm connected to the community. Um, the other side, I am connected to the community of knowing everyone is. Also know a lot of the government officials and a lot of the judges here in Montgomery. Um, they handle like family court cases or anything that we would think about, how does it even get to being criminalized? Like, we think about Robert or or um uh Carrie. You know, when we think, how does it get that far? Where does it start? And I'm one of those people that want to do the work. You know, I need to find out where it came from. How did you get here? And what I found in that during my own little beta testing is that what sometimes when it get to the family court case or it get to, if it get to the family court case. Because just like Deidra and and um doctor said, Dr. Mom, I'm called Dr. Mom, Dr. Mob said, um, the embarrassment, the stigma, you know, it goes right into what Deidra said about um, it's almost like notoriety versus stigma. So you get to court and all of a sudden, you are angry and mad that you had sex or with this individual that possibly have a communicable disease, as we say. And you get to court, you're all mad, you with the lawyer, you want to do this, you want to do that. And then it hit you. This is about to become public record. That everybody is about to know. I had all my anger toward this one person that I felt put me in danger. And now it's about to hit Alabama State Public Record. So guess what happens? Notoriety versus stigma comes into play again. Guess what? Notoriety wins. No, stigma wins because you now rescind your charges or I know I don't want to go through with this anymore. So now we have a deficit in numbers. So much mu- much of our, lot of our, lot of our HIV work, our numbers are off. Um, because we know where it is in the grassroots. So when I started coming across individuals like, okay, yeah, I um um I know about him. And yeah, he's the one who infected me. And yet I'm like, okay, um, you sound like there's some anger. Um, do you want to talk about it? And once you dive in a little bit more and not that I need to know, but they always tell me. So I'm like, well, um, do you know there are criminalization laws? Or, you know, it's not a very specific one. There's a communicable, communicable disease law that actually would have covered you a little bit more. There are resources, there are protection or things that could have helped you through that. Because now you're walking around traumatized because you saw this man or saw this girl in CVS. So now we jump over to what organizationally will we do? Tick trauma-informed care. So now we're trauma-informed care. So but all come from that basic notoriety stigma thing and not even wanting to even press charges. So we have issues from both sides of the house. We have issues of their laws or these communicable disease laws have disparities inside of them. But we also have the same piece of people being stigmatized or afraid to even charge people just because of the same thing, small town. Like, we from the rural area. I'm from a rural area too, where we have one-stop sign. And matter of fact, it's still a one-stop sign. Um, but my whole thing is like, if this is the realness of this, you know, criminalization and finding those resources, you know, um that will keep them from feeling, you know, like they don't have a, they have help. So for me, I think, you know, just to piggyback and I'll shut up here because I could talk. But um I think the biggest piece is seeing that side of the house makes me really, really understand why Sarah Plus and these and a project, uh Project Share really, really need to happen here in the state of Alabama.
Thank you, Marco. Any, any final uh comments, uh Dr. Gordon?
Um, yes. And so just kind of, you know, listening to what Deidra shared and what Marco shared. You know, one thing I thought about is that there may be instances in which the law may be justified to a degree. Um, because there may, there are situations, you know, where you do have individuals who do not disclose, let's say that they may be HIV positive. And guess what? They're not on any type of treatment or any therapy. And, you know, I mean, there are situations in which the law can be justified. And so what happens is even though you have those situations in which it's justified, there's like ten more that's not. Um, and so it makes it very unjust. And so that's why it's important. Sometimes the gray areas can help you. But sometime those gray areas can also cause a lot of issues. And so with this particular law, I see those gray areas as being problematic. And so um I feel like, you know, of course, it criminalizes a person who's living with HIV, which is not fair and is not right. Um, but it also further stigmatizes, um kind of going into what Deidra mentioned, I'm a person who's living with HIV and that's also not fair or right. And like I said earlier, is that some of this law is based in ignorance, right? Because there's still so many people who are completely ignorant to how HIV truly works. They have, and not even just HIV, STDs in general, STIs, all of the above. Um, because if they had a really good understanding of the science behind all of it, then this law would be written differently. But because there's a fear, and I think that this law does, it 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 is, there is some intentional stigma attached to it, right? Um, that's kind of sort of what it was designed to do. Um, and so I think that if anything, um hopefully at some point, um, it could be rewritten, written in a different way. Um, so that it does not just leave it so open in all these open spaces. And it should not be stigmatizing, it should not be criminalizing or anything like that. So that's just something that I'm leaving on the table that I hope now with having this Awareness Day and having these conversations and now that it has grown, gone global. Um, as Deidra mentioned, that hopefully the state of Alabama uh will follow suit. Um, and hopefully, again, some, some changes will be made to these particular laws.
Thank you, uh Dr. Gordon, for that. Uh, and I just wanted to highlight again the fact that we now have this Observance Day. This is also an opportunity for individuals who may be watching to say, well, what can I do? I didn't know that, you know, this could happen in um in our, in our state. Uh, and especially those, you know, I would say that out of all the states in the the country, uh Texas, Texas may uh be upset with me for saying this, but don't nobody love football like Alabama, right? And, you know, and to see one of their loved ones, you know, have to go through something like this. Might just spark your interest to want to do something. Um, and so now that you know February twenty-eighth is HIV is not a crime Awareness Day. Um, if you've got those connections with lawmakers, uh you have, um, you know, those uh abilities to influence folks who are the decision makers. Continue to raise awareness, raise, you know, consciousness, have local conversations. Break it down to what that truly means about uh someone being prosecuted uh for not disclosing in Alabama, not just their HIV status, but their STD um status as well. When um when we came up for the, this name, Project Share, um, this, those two words, Project Share, really speak to my personal uh beliefs around HIV criminalization. And as you saw in our video, we talked about two consenting adults that if we consented to have sex, we get to share in that love and that pleasure, but we also share in the responsibility. It has never seemed fair or just to me that if two people are engaged in sex, but then only one person is accountable for the both of us, that just doesn't seem just to me because all of this, I'm responsible for my sexual health. And so if nothing more, we continue to have those conversations about having conversations before we are engaged in sexual activity. And then it is my, you know, my choice if I, if I choose to engage or not. Um, not just asking the right questions, but also treating all of my partners, my sexual partners, the same, knowing that I'm responsible for my own sexual health. And so whether you choose to disclose information with me or not, I need to take the necessary precautions to protect myself. And that is shared responsibility. We thank you all so much for uh joining uh with us. This video will be made available. Your Alabama State Fact Sheet is also made available. Dr. Gordon's uh video of Project Share will also be made uh available. And again, take these tools. This whole program was designed for you to have some resources to help you continue these conversations in the communities where you live, work, play and worship. So Deidra, Marco and Brisha, thank you so much for being with us on this afternoon and raising awareness on this special Awareness Day. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Well, before we, I do have this conversation with your your grandma. Like, I've had these conversations with grandma, my grandmother, only have one that's, you know, still present with us. And I've talked to her about um undetectable equals untransmittable. And in her eighties, she can tell you what that means. Uh, she's dealing with dementia, but she could tell you, um.
In her own words.
Yes, in her own words. She could tell you how to do that. Um, you know, of course, in in my family, I'm the person living with HIV and I'm the the vocal person. But at the same time, we bring it up as many times as we can. I'm asking my cousins, do you have, I mean, I sent my kids away to college with thousands of condoms. Um, and not in the hopes of, I hope if you do have sex, it's going to be pleasurable. But I also want you to have prepared, um, you know, have safer practices in in play that you got those condoms. You also know about PrEP, which is uh pre-exposure prophylaxis, or you know about PEP, which is um post-exposure prophylaxis. How to get those things, where to go. And then also to normalize these conversations about HIV, about sex, about sexually transmitted diseases and infections. Um, some of us have been there. We've all had to had that one penicillin shot at some point in our life. Um, and we don't talk about it often, like, oh, that's shameful. But no, um, that is what honestly brings out conversations and brings us up. Because then what about those individuals that are in spaces and places that are ashamed to share their HIV status? And then they are criminalized because they are scared to share that because of the community stigma um that comes along. And even before my HIV diagnosis, I know I was using stigmatizing languages and saying things that were inappropriate. Have conversations about um what transgender, what people of trans experience. Have that conversation. What does that look like? How are you going to support um pronouns? If people are, you know, saying those things incorrectly. If you have a cousin or whomever in your family that, you know, because they say in in my neck of town, sweet tea. Well, you know, okay, well, sweet tea got some sweet tea, but you know, you disrespecting them in some manners and way you talking. How do you step up? And so it doesn't have to be a full-on going rah rah hard in the paint. Um, like some of us doing some of this advocacy work. But if you're at a store and someone is disrespecting someone in a community in any way, speak up and say something, you know, that was inappropriate. And I'm going to stand up for my friend, my sister, my community member. Do that. We have a ways to go. I'm looking forward, um, because it's sounding like at some point that Alabama, um, and to give you some, some, a little bit of history over Virginia, we had um a representative that came into our General Assembly and submitted this bill that pretty much said that if you were undetectable, you would not be, um, if you were at an undetectable state, you could not be criminalized. Well, when you do that, you create a viral underclass. What about those folks that don't know their HIV status? They don't want to know their HIV status. They can never get to an undetectable status and they've been taking meds for six months, six years, sixty years. What about those folks? And so we saw that and as a community, we killed that bill. And we turned around, Dr. Gordon, and we wrote our own community-led and written bill. And we said, and this is what our bill, what we want it to look like. And unfortunately, the one piece that we we didn't get to was the intent in felony. And when ours in in the Commonwealth of Virginia, in order to prove with intent, transmission has to occur. And we even expanded our um. And we even expanded our um, our criminal law to where it was just HIV, hepatitis and syphilis. Yes, we expanded it to include all sexually transmitted infections. Not everybody is happy with me on that one, but we had to take it step by step because it was either that or nothing at all. And we would still be in these archaic um, Andrakonian laws. And so we wanted to take something. Fortunately for us, we had a little bit of shift in our leadership um, in Virginia. And we had to take a little hush moment and we're reassessing. And we're coming back as a community really strong in twenty-five, um, in two thousand twenty-five to really take that. Um, that community-led bill to the next level to either erase that felony. Get a misdemeanor or completely, completely uh, repeal all of our HIV crime laws. So if it can happen with a, a team of maybe twenty of us. Um, and to front-facing myself and Dr. Cedric Pulliam, the co-founders of Echo VA. If it can happen with us, we know for a fact it can happen in Alabama as well. So we look forward to assisting you. So talk to grandma, tell your grandma, tell your little cousins. Um, and, and send them and have real honest and, and real conversations about this. Show them this video. Hey, we go, we got some tea time. Y'all do TikToks and all that good stuff? Awesome. Watch this thing for, you know, a few minutes and let's have discussion.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Deidre. Thank you, everybody. Uh, and have a fantastic evening.
Bye-bye.
Bye.